Council meeting of the twenty first of April twenty twenty two. And I will just open us with our opening karakia. Anyone else is welcome to join in if they wish. To tāwai mai rōngā, bu tāwai mai raro, tu tāwai mai kōtō, bu tāwai mai wāhau. Iato, aitipu, māori ora, kite kato, pome, koe, tai. First up, we have apologies from councillor Taylor. Do I have a mover and seconda, please? Thank you councillor Crown and councillor Bogue. All those in favour, please raise your hands against Kerry. Any conflicts of interest? We do not have any public forum today. Announcements from myself. I just wanted to say I hope everyone had a lovely Easter. It was wonderful to see so many people out and about in our city spaces, both locals and visitors alike. There was such a good buzz all around town. And of course, this weekend, this coming Monday, we have our ANZAC Day commemorations. And I look forward to seeing many of you at the various ceremonies that will be on offer. And I did just want to take the opportunity to say congratulations and well done to the Timatia and Taradale High Schools for the incredible Taradale and District Schools Spirit of ANZAC Commemoration that they held at the Taradale Town Park last week. This was supported by the Greendale Services Association, but the students actually pulled the whole thing together and do all of the speeches and run the commemoration service. And this year, the son of our very own councillor Tapani was the master of ceremonies. Case Tapani and did an absolutely incredible job at actually running that whole commemoration service. So I thank you to all who were involved in that service for honouring our service people, past and present, and ensuring their stories are passed on to future generations. I would just ask if there are any minor matters not on the agenda. Any announcements by management? Excellent. So confirmation of minutes of the ordinary meeting of council held on Tuesday, the tenth of March. Can I have a mover and seconda, please? Don't all jump at once. Thank you councillor McGrath and councillor Price. All those in favour, please raise your hand against Kerry. And then the extraordinary meeting of council held on Thursday, the thirty first of March. A mover and seconda, please. Thank you councillor Crystal and councillor Tapani. All those in favour, please raise your hands against Kerry. Moving into our agenda items today, and first cab off the rank, we have the chief executive's report.
Thank you, your worship, and tēnā koutou. Just happy to present to you the chief executive's report for the last six weeks. I did want to draw your attention to a couple of things in the report, but for the most part, I will take it as read. So obviously, it's hard today to remember the situation we're in, just this time last week with predicted really heavy rainfall. Of course impacting our neighbours as they have been for many months. But we too here in Napier have had significant rainfall and I think it's worthwhile reflecting that over February and March, we've had half our annual rainfall in two months. So four hundred and thirty-three millimetres in those months and our annual rainfall is around the eight hundred millimetres. So while we escaped the hardest hitting part of the systems that have been moving through to the credit of our stormwater systems in our community, we did manage to, infrastructure managed to hold up well. I think there's been some real improvements that have been made, but also a real increased understanding that our roadways are indeed stormwater, are holding, they're part of the stormwater network and they do hold stormwater on those rainfall events. It's really good to see the community responding as well and being really cautious about driving in those events. So we're hoping that's the rainfall done and dusted for a while and we'll have a pretty settled autumn. I think also, just foreshadowing a bit of the future, a few weeks ahead for council, we do have our infrastructure acceleration fund at twelve million dollar application, which is due to we're due to find out if we have been successful in the application at the end of this month. And the application was to really improve the stormwater system around Maranui. So I'll keep councillors updated on that. In terms of COVID, it's good to report that in Napier City Council, our numbers of people who are affected or impacted by COVID is dropping. And so we are expecting this to be quite a long tail, which is the advice that we've been given with COVID persisting in our community for some time. But in terms of business continuity, we are managing well now. We have a number of people who have recovered from COVID and we are continuing our business and service and levels of service. The same can't be said for all of our contractors, unfortunately, and there has been some reasonably big impacts on the contractors that we rely on. So we're just obviously working closely with them to ensure that we are able to, you know, shift resources where we need to and assist for that broader service delivery to the community. That's all from me, Madame Mia, in terms of the report itself. So just happy to take questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Steph. And I did just want to highlight there is updates here on projects, of course, and there's the War Memorial Restoration, which is particularly relevant at the moment with ANZAC Day just a few days away. And this is, there's a brief summary here of the next immediate milestones, but we will be receiving a more detailed update report on the War Memorial Restoration Project at our next People in Places Committee meeting in a week or so's time, which I know many members of the community will be looking forward to. So certainly looking forward to progressing that project myself. But, and again, just a general comment, this is the second chief executive report we've received and I'd like to thank Steph and all those who are involved in pulling it together. It provides some really useful updates, not only for us as elected members, but for the community around all our sort of key areas of interest and projects, consultations, things that are happening from a legislative perspective. It's a really good report with lots of great information. So thank you. It's a pleasure to have it on our six weekly agenda. So I will just open up now to councillors for any questions that they may have. And if you wouldn't mind using the raise your hand function, just because I can't see everybody on my screen, councillor Bogue.
Yes, oh, thank you very much, Madame Mia. And yes, I'm Master Grant. Great to get this report with so much interesting information in it. But just to pick up on your comment about the update, Madame Mia, for the War Memorial progress that's being made, it will be, yes, it will be on the People in Places Committee meeting this time next week. But for people who want to read it before then, it will be on the agenda, which will come out today, the People in Places on our website. So that update will be available to the public in its written form anyway, earlier than next Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bogue. Any further questions? No? So can I please ask for a mover and seconda for this agenda item? Thank you councillor Bogue and councillor Wright. Did either of you wish to speak to this? Okay, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands against Kerry. Next up, we have just a procedural agenda item amendments to the twenty twenty-two council committee meeting schedule. And I'm not sure, Helen, if you wished to speak to this or if we just take it as read. Essentially, it's just that we're amending our council and committee start times to nine thirty. Did you wish to add anything further to that?
Nothing more to add. Thank you, Mia Wais.
Thank you, Helen. Any questions from councillors? Can I ask for a mover and seconda, please? Thank you councillor Price and councillor Crown. All those in favour, please raise your hands against Kerry. Number three is the retirement of the local government official information and meetings ex policy. And I would just invite Helen to speak to this paper, please.
Thank you, Mia Wais. Kia ora koutou. So this is simply a question of eliminating one level of administration that isn't actually required in our processes. The organisation follows the Legoma Act directly. We use the support documents from the Office of the Ombudsman for all the guidelines, templates, et cetera. So considering that the policy itself did not add any sort of additional information, it seems unnecessary to retain it. So I'm asking for approval to retire this policy, please.
Thank you very much, Helen. I'll just ask if there's any questions from councillors? No? I'll therefore ask for a mover and seconda, please. Thank you deputy mayor Brosnan and councillor Crystal. Did either of you wish to speak to that?
No.
No? Okay, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands against Kerry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Helen. Agenda item four is an update on actions arising from the Long Term Plan twenty twenty-one thirty-one deliberations. And I believe Adele, will you be presenting this paper? Thank you.
Yes, well, thank you very much and kia ora and good morning, everyone. So the purpose of this report was, there was a number of actions that were captured as part of the Long Term Plan and they were delegated to officers to progress. And so the report provides an update of where council officers are at in relation to the various actions. We have got all the directors online today, so if there are questions and we need some more specific answers, otherwise I'll take the paper as read. And you're welcome any questions. I see councillor Crown has one already.
Thank you, Adele. So we will pass across to councillor Crown for the first question.
Thank you through you, Madame Mia. Just in regards to the memorandum of understanding that we are trying to land with our Manafinoa partners, with Tifanganoi or Oroto. I'm just, it seems like the process is taking a wee while, just wondering where to from here and what the expectation is around timing from our offices.
Kia ora through you, Madame Mia, and thank you councillor Crown. So it is a legacy sort of action in the spirit of there was discussions about a MIU with Tetafinoa or Tifanganoi or Oroto. At this stage, the indications are that Tetafinoa is not of the view that the MIU is needed. We do have some other arrangements in place, particularly with respect to our working together, how we resource Tetafinoa to assist us in our work programmes. Not able to formally remove that at this stage councillor Crown or report back to council, but essentially we've tried to look at a more contemporary model, one that reduces funding and resourcing, and I look forward to bringing that back to council when it has landed. So I think that this long-term plan action is being progressed. It's almost at conclusion, but it will look slightly different to the way it has been wedded now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, deputy mayor Brosnan.
Maudina, thank you, your worship. Just a question on the traffic safety plans update. So my recollection of the consultation work that we did and I suppose the resolutions that we made was that we would be increasing the number of targeted specific traffic management or safety plans for specific areas. We're noting the Murphy Road School one in there, which is really good, but my memory was that we were, I think we consulted on maybe up to three or four, someone could possibly correct me on the number. And I just wonder what we're doing to sort of identify which areas of traffic management plans we're going to focus on next and what progress we're making on those.
And thank you. Okay, welcome, Robin, to respond to that question, please.
Kia koutou. Through you, Madame. So thank you, deputy mayor. The, I don't know why I looked. The identified traffic management plans, obviously, we've got certain ones which were actually named in the programmes which we gave consideration to when we were developing the LTPs. And as you rightly note, council was of mind actually that we should be doing more of that work. That's something that the team is working on at the moment. We are working with Wakakatahi to identify the most suitable areas. Obviously, we get joint funding from them and we are doing this work under their Road to Zero banner. What that does is, means that we get quite a lot of input from them into identifying areas and particular interventions that will help. And that's the point where we will then start working with the individual communities. At the moment, we're just starting to get rolling on Douglas McLean work for next year. But it will be an ongoing sort of two or three at a time rather than coming up with a long list of interventions. As I'm sure you're aware, we do have some slightly transitional problems and then we have some problems which are far longer added in. So an ongoing process. But I can't give you a list at the moment, I'm afraid.
Thank you through you, your worship. So just, sorry, supplementary to that, just to understand that, Robin. So at the moment, we're working on Murphy, looking to transition into working on Douglas McLean. And then we'll kind of be working on two at a time, say, and then we'll, you're looking to identify the next ones and that we're rolling work programmes. Is that a fair summary?
Yes, sorry. So we do have more identified and I don't have the list in front of me, unfortunately. So there are more than just those two identified at the moment. There are some areas where we have more budget than we had work identified for that particular year, which was where council had said, no, we should be doing more. But so it's just filling in a few of those gaps. So I could certainly share that list with council.
Thank you. I think that'd be really helpful. Thank you, Robin. Your worship.
Thank you. So if we could just note that action, please, governance team, that that list of the traffic safety plan priorities will be shared with elected members. Just a couple of questions from myself, really around some timing on some of the items in here. Firstly, being the Maranui street lighting, which is something that has been sort of on the radar for quite some time now. And it's good to see that trees are starting to be trimmed and removed. And then there'll be some work continuing on from that around infill lighting. I'm just wondering if you're able to give us some indicative timing around that, because this sort of has been hanging around for quite some time now. So I'd certainly be keen to know that this is being progressed as quickly as possible if a council officer could answer that question, please.
It's okay, your worship, direct from me again. The work that was ongoing, and this has run on for a long time, it's been an issue for quite a while. There's a considerable portion of our street lights are mounted on unison poles, power poles through Maranui. And they are not installed at a spacing designed for street lighting necessarily. The LED rollout has taken place since sort of twenty eighteen through till July twenty twenty-one. We made sure that Maranui was first in the rollout for those LEDs to try and have a small increase on improvement. But there were two categories of streetlights and therefore there was a staggered approach. The programme that we're planning to get to at the moment will have to come back to council because there will be additional budget required for filling in the gaps where removal of trees, trimming of trees or the improved luminaires hasn't had the desired effect. So we don't have that number at the moment of new poles will be required, but there will obviously be some sort of capital investment to bring that up to standard. So we will have to come back to council because it's unbudgeted.
And any indicative timings around when this will be coming to us to approve additional budget?
We could probably give you a fairly rough estimate in a couple of weeks. We'd like to refine that a little bit and also make sure that we can actually deliver on it as well as just giving you the estimates. We'd certainly like to think that it will be with council before the end of the financial year. Not expecting it necessarily to be included in next year's annual plan, but at least giving council the opportunity to understand the scale of the issue.
Madame Mia, may I just chip in for a minute about that, if you don't mind?
No problem at all.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Robin. I've seen there's some big trees being removed, particularly along Getus, and the feedback I've heard from the residents is positive. So thank you. But there have been some other trees planted to replace them, some sort of tall skinny trees. And I just wondered what those trees are, because I think we're going to see quite a lot of them cropping up. Obviously, they're not going to create the problems that the ones that were removed have done so. What sort of trees are they, the new ones?
I can't, through you, Madame Mia, I can't give you the species. Deborah Stewart may well be able to. Quite a bit of work was done over the last couple of years to determine which species are suitable for street trees. And we certainly around the city have an awful lot of trees that are not really suitable as street trees. They've either got very large invasive roots or they've got very large canopies or they're quite brittle branches. So I will potentially pass to my director.
I can see Lance has got his hand up, so he may have the answer for us.
Thank you.
Got his hand up, but he's on mute. Lance, you're on mute.
Yes, sorry. They are tall trees, narrow trees called hornbeats. And we can get a photo too, the councillors have required.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just my second question, again with regards to some timeframes, please. We have, again, for some time been looking for community plans for our various ward communities. And there was an instruction to develop a time framework to determine what these may look like. And these are currently in development. Just wondering if, again, we can be given in some indicative timeframes as to when this framework might be completed.
Through the mayor, I don't believe that we've got Natasha online today, so we will take that as an action and come back to council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Adele. So I just will double check that there's no further questions from councillors. No, so I'll ask for a mover and seconda.
Councillor Tapani. Greetings, your worship. Sorry. And through you, your worship. So this is a follow-on question to Deb, if we can, around Lance's answer to the species and name of the tree. If we could also have included either by memo or by schedule any related or continuing works with regards to remaining trees in the area that may all, that have been highlighted for removal. Just so we get a touch point on where we are in progress and how many trees are left to be removed.
Through you, Madame Mia, that's no problems at all. We'll attempt to get to the next sustainable meeting with the budget requirements and we can include that detail in that report at the same time. Fantastic. Thank you, Deb. Right, so no further questions. Could I have a mover and seconda, please? Thank you councillor Tapani and councillor Mawson. Did either of you wish to speak to that? No? Okay, I'll put the motion then. All those in favour, please raise your hands against Kerry. Agenda item five is the Regional Transport Committee update. I would invite the council officer to present that if there's anything specific other than it being taken as read.
My sincere apologies. I don't have it in front of me. However, in which case I would love to take it as read. More than happy to take any questions on this.
Okay, thank you, Robin. I would just like to actually say thank you to yourself and any of the other staff who were involved in pulling together our submission for the road user charges review, which is currently underway. I thought it was a very clear, concise submission and I just wanted to endorse that and give our thanks. And secondly, I did just want to see if anyone was able to provide an update regarding the safety feasibility studies that are underway for State Highway Five. I note they were due to be completed in March last month and just wondered if we have any update on where those are at.
So through you, Madame Mia, I don't believe there are any further advances on what was identified in the regional relationships director's report and into the item. I can let you know that the Regional Transport Committee is not letting Wakakatahi off likely at all. They are coming under considerable pressure at every meeting to demonstrate that they are progressing, they are delivering.
Thank you very much, Robin. And could we just make an action there to follow up on that? Considering those feasibility studies were due to be completed last month and just to see where they're up to. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from councillors?
Yes. Thank you. Yes, I'd like to ask a question about something that's not on the minutes. But just to ask you, Robin, what's the RTC doing about including active transport, high suckling and walking in its brief? Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Through you, Madame Mia. Just to provide a little bit of context on this, the original agenda for the last RTC had an item proposing that a member of the Regional Cycle Governance Group were to be given position on the RTC with voting rights. That was actually put on the table by the time the meeting actually happened. And we have held a number of workshops since to actually determine what form that that representation can take. The progress at the moment is very good. It's been very collegial. There hasn't been any conflict or abrasion between any of the parties. or abrasion between any of the parties involved. Martin Williams has also been involved and is, appears to be very keen to make sure that there is a representative on the RTC representing active transport on its own. Just bearing in mind that the Regional Transport Committee does not have any boundaries in terms of the mode to transport, it represents, or funds. So it is holistic transport group. That said, it was felt that there wasn't adequate representation for active modes. And that's particularly resonant, given that the some of the targets in the regional transport plan are very, very ambitious. They won't be achieved unless we see considerable uptake and increase in the use of active modes. So there is quite a bit going on in the background. To my understanding, the aim is to bring that paper back in a more developed form to the next RTC. And as I say, certainly the chair seems very open to having that additional voting member representing those groups.
Thank you, Robin.
Councillor Price.
I think just further to what Robin said, is Martin is working on the process to do this. So we know where we want to get, but how we get there in the process, et cetera, is what's taking place. Thank you.
Thank you. And just while we've got you on the screen there councillor Price, as our representative on that committee, is there anything further that you would like to add with regards to this agenda item?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward. I mean, when it comes to Naikia, we have a very small roading area. When you come to State Highway Five, what you're talking about, I mean, there's a lot of pressure going on Waka Katahi from Regional Transport Committee, a lot.
Thank you for that update. If there are no further questions, can I please ask for a mover and seconda? Thank you councillor Price and seconded by councillor Mawson. Did either of you wish to speak to that?
I think it's all been said. Thank you.
Very good.
Just, you think, sorry, through the, through the, you're just happy that the pressure's still been put on Waka Katahi. I think the community are really, they haven't let it go. They have a top of road. So it's good to see that there's still pressure on them. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mawson. If no one else wishes to speak to the motion, I will put that. All those in favour, please say aye. Raise your hands against carried. And our final agenda item before we go on to reports from the standing committees is the meeting summary from Clifton to Punggoya Coastal Hazard Strategy Joint Committee. That's sort of a mouthful. And I guess just wanting to highlight that we are currently consulting as part of our draft annual plan on coastal hazards. And the proposal is that the management of coastal hazards going forward is transferred to the Hawke's Bay Regional Council from ourselves and Hastings District Council. And that is because they are far better placed to actually be able to manage the strategy and implementation along the coastline, which straddles both Naikia and Hastings. And this particular item is cost neutral. So essentially, that means the regional council will start rating for what we have previously as individual councils rated. So looking forward to receiving your submissions on that as part of our draft annual plan we're currently consulting on. So I'll just open up to councillors if they have any questions or if the representatives on this committee would like to provide us with any additional information. There being nothing, can I please have a mover and seconda? Thank you, Deputy Mayor Brosnan and councillor Simpson. Did either of you wish to speak to that? No. If there's no other comments, I will put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands against passed. We had no minor matters on the agenda, so we'll move straight into our reports and recommendations from the standing committees. First up is the Naikia People and Places Committee, held on the 17th of March 2022. Item one, the Meiki Meter Initiative was a decision of council, so we'll, no need to include that one. Now, we will move these in bulk unless there's something that you would like to ask questions on. So Naikia Social Monitor Report 2021 is the only other item on that committee agenda. So can I ask for a mover and seconda, please? Thank you councillor Bogue and councillor Wright. Did you wish to speak to that?
Can I just say, as far as the second item is concerned, the social monitor report, it is also going to be attached to and used in our People and Places Committee meeting next week for an item on welcoming communities. So I think we're getting, going to get quite a lot of mileage out of this. It's an excellent report and it's good to see the staff using it in different ways. Thanks.
Thank you very much councillor Bogue. Councillor Wright, did you wish to speak to that at all? No. Okay. I will put the motion then. All those in favour, please raise your hands against passed. Onto the Prosperous Naikia Committee, held on the 17th of March. Three agenda items, the quarterly report for the six months ended 31 December 2021. The Hawke's Bay Airport Limited interim report for the six months ended 31 December 2021. And the Hawke's Bay Airport Draft Statement of Intent for 2022/23. If there's no questions, can I ask for a mover and seconda, please? Thank you councillor Crown and councillor Simpson. Would either of you like to make any comments? No. And if there's no comments from other councillors, I will, councillor Crystal. No, no questions. You're just getting ready to vote. I will put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands against carried. Onto the Sustainable Naikia Committee, held on 24th of March. Items one and two being the Integrated Trade Waste and Waste Water Bylaw and the Water Supply Bylaw Statement of Proposal were both decisions of council. Following on from that, we had a report on Three Waters Reform Programme, decorative paving shop entrance policy, capital program delivery and lease of reserve Danish Delight. Is that me you moving councillor Price? Thank you. And seconded by councillor Crystal. Did anyone wish to speak to that? No. So I will put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands against carried. Future Naikia Committee, held on the 24th of March, two items being the Resource Consent Activity Update and the Dog Control Bylaw and Policy Statement of Proposal. If there are no questions, I have a mover, please. Deputy Mayor Brosnan and seconded by councillor Mawson. If there's no questions, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, raise your hand against carried. Our last reports from a standing committee are from the Audit and Risk Committee, held on the 25th of March. Six agenda items being the Health and Safety Report, Risk Management, Business Continuity Planning and Response to COVID-19, Sensitive Expenditure Mayor and Chief Executive, Internal Audit, Building and Resource Consents Review and External Accountability for Annual Plan 2022/23 Underlying Documents. I will just open up for any questions that elected members may have on any of those agenda items. There being none, I'm happy to move from the chair as a member of this committee and seconded by councillor Simpson. I have no further comments councillor. Councillor Simpson, do you wish to add any comments?
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to thank the staff. We've had an exceptionally trying 18 months where staff have had to continually review policies. Those policies have regularly been run through the Audit and Risk Committee for governance oversight. And I think staff have just performed exceptionally well during what is a very rapidly evolving period of time. They've had to deal with both the COVID consequences and the operation of the business as well as managing our external and internal threats and risks. And I think they've done an exceptional job over the last two years, 18 months.
Thank you councillor Simpson, and couldn't agree more. I think we're all looking forward to hopefully it settling down a little bit in the ensuing 12 months. So I will now put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands against carried. Now, our final item on the agenda is the reports under delegated authority and tenders lit. Are there any questions? Therefore, I will ask for a mover and seconda, please. Thank you councillor Simpson and deputy mayor Brosnan. Did you wish to speak to that? No, I will put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye or raise your hands against carried. So we will now move into public excluded. If I could have a mover and seconda, please. Thank you councillor Crystal and councillor Bogue. All those in favour, please raise your hands against carried.